Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Okay. Good evening, good evening, board members, Madam Superintendent, staff, parents, and community members. Welcome to Refinancing Operations Work Session, February 1st. Other than the hiring of our superintendent, the most important obligation or duty of the board is to pass a budget. And that is what we were going to be presenting today. We will have four presentations from our Acting Chief Financial Officer, Jim Barnes. Two of them will be on actual expenditures. You have to know your actual expenditures before you can prepare a budget. And one will be on the budget process. And the last one will be on our payroll process. Before we begin, I just want to mention that we received some good news today. The governor announced her new budget. And according to the New York State School Board Association, it included many good things for our, for Buffalo and our school districts, one of which was $3.707 billion increase, or a 9.9% increase in state aid for schools. Can we say yes? All districts are guaranteed to get at least a 3% increase in foundation aid. Another yes. And they included full funding of our expense-based aid, so our building reimbursements and things like that are included. So we have very good news. And with that, I will turn it over to our superintendent, because our budget is a statement of priorities, and they are set by our superintendent for our district. Madam Superintendent.
Thank you so much, Chairwoman Woods. That certainly is really, 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 really good news. We like when resources come into our district for our students that will benefit them. So tonight, you're right, we have a few presentations. We're going to try hard to stay within, you know, the timeframe. I've already spoke to our acting CFO, so... I'm hearing something.
Hello?
Everyone could mute?
I didn't hear what's going on with the non-emergency here. You know, okay?
Yep, I'm doing all right. What's up?
If everyone could mute. Okay. So again, I don't want to, you know, take up a lot of time. These are important things. Our budget is certainly a priority where we decide to spend our money shows where our priorities are in our district. So it's very important work. And, you know, I had requested that we have a short presentation from payroll, because I think it's important for all of us to know kind of what the processes are, especially to those extra activity payroll sheets. So we have a short presentation from payroll. We don't want to ever delay any of our staff from receiving numeration and monies when they've done the job that we've requested them to do. We want to make sure that they're paid in a timely fashion. So we do have a short presentation on that. I will turn things over to Acting CFO, Mr. Barnes. And I do want to say, I saw President Kotman on, and she had her Hajj Eve on, and today is National Hajj Day, and we will be celebrating this until February 10th, but certainly even after that. So, you know, we want to make sure we focus on equity and diversity and inclusion in our district, and we want everybody to know that, you know, that they matter. And so, thank you for showing up tonight in a beautiful Hajj. Okay, Acting CFO, Barnes?
Thank you, Superintendent, and thank you, Mrs. Woods. So there's a lot here to review. I've tried to present the data very succinctly. I would ask respectfully if we could keep the questions to the end. There's four topics here, and I think that might be the best way for all of us to get the most out of this. So, anyway, I'm going to be presenting the second quarter financial report. Let's take a look at how we're doing in the current year first. I'm going to give you an update on the 2324 budget process and our PESR update. Then I'll talk about extra activity payroll. I wanted to make a comment upfront. Edna, the next slide, please. I wanted to make a quick comment before we start. The issues that are covered in these reports, plus the upcoming release of a $360 million building condition survey, it creates a $1.5 billion puzzle with one very large unknown piece, the final cost of a BTF contract settlement. So while the full impact of that contract is not known, and we have very good estimates built into our financial models, I think one thing is certain, that not every budget request can or will be funded next year. And we need to be, we need to be focused and aware of all these issues surrounding our various funds and how they're interrelated, maybe more so than in any other recent budget year. And I'll present examples of each of that issue in each of the reports tonight. So, next slide, Edna. So let's start out with how we're doing six months into the current year. Here's a quick summary of our second quarter financial report. The first column, the current year revised budget, we were projecting a $34.6 million deficit. That's the budget we passed. I gave a first quarter report and a projection about three months ago. At that time, there wasn't enough data for the current year expenditures or revenues to make any substantial changes to the projection, so we were showing a $32.6 million deficit. Now that we got six months of data, a lot of trend data on salaries, transportation, benefits, charter schools, we can now project out a decrease down to a $16.1 million deficit. So we were projecting our deficit to be almost cut in half now. Real quickly, I'll touch on some items that drove those changes in projections. On the revenue side, we're expecting $3 million more in revenue, and right now that is due to the higher-than-expected run rate on sales tax. Our state aid revenues are expected to be right on budget, and so that's all good news. On the expenditure side, with our current, with the projections I just finished up, we're expecting to spend $15.5 million less than our original budget. The biggest areas of change, right now we're projecting a $12.5 million vacancy savings, $6 million in charter school tuition savings, $3 million in transportation savings, and $2 million in agency tuition savings. Now, I want to say though, that these projections, that those projected savings, they're going to be partially offset by a $9 million increase in interfund transfers. Those will be used to fund capital projects, the All High Stadium renovation, and increases in the summer handicap program expenditures. So a lot of good news, but this is the first example of how we got to be mindful next, the remainder of this year, next year, and how the, all the funds are interrelated. The savings, the projected deficit could have been much lower, but we're using $9 million to transfer to capital. The full second quarter report will be submitted to the city and the control board this week. I should get them out tomorrow morning, and I'll have them on the board recs for the February 15th meeting. Included in that full report is FTE and staffing data, projected cash flows, and a line-by-line breakdown of the first six months results and the projection for the remainder of the year. Next slide, Edna. Okay, an update on the budget process. The governor did release their, her proposed budget today. On the next slide, I'll go through how it's impacting our revenues compared to the current year, but I'll give you just some technical updates quickly. The annual budget process officially began last week with the distribution of the superintendent's kickoff package. I did send that out to the board members. Central office departments, they can begin entering their budget requests later this week, and training is scheduled for February 9th and 16th. There's a lot of people in the district who've been involved in the budget process and the data entry required in MUNIS. That's why, for those experienced users, they can start this week. The due date for departments, what we call 102 submission, the due date for the departments' budget submissions is March 17th. For the school-based budget process, budget books will be distributed this week. We sent them out for final edits today. The school-based management teams are expected to submit their completed books back to budget by early March. School-based budget review and approval meetings will begin in April. Written into this year's school-based budget manual is a mechanism for using vacant FTE dollars to be reallocated six months into the year to improve equity and school allocations and spending. So... We heard you, and that will be input, it'll be in the manual and described in all the school-based budget meetings. A second thing to keep in mind, and a big theme of this year's budget, the projected student counts in the school-based budgets, they've decreased this year to reflect the actual decreases in enrollment. That's important for all of us to be aware of. So those are the mechanics. Edna, if you could turn to the next slide. What we do at this stage, we create a Level 1 Maintenance of Effort Budget Projection. This is a very important exercise for our financial plan. We construct a Level 1 budget each year to provide an estimate of the surplus or deficit prior to the actual budget submitted through either the school-based budgets or the central office departments. We want to know, based on our best estimates, what we're looking at, the challenges or opportunities we're looking at next year. This Level 1 budget includes an estimate of the state aid revenues, based upon the state's November database, and they were updated this afternoon for the governor's budget. It includes all contract step and longevity increases to current staff levels, any associated benefit cost increases, any new leases, the initial projections of charter school enrollments and tuitions, and estimated debt service and transfers to capital to fund capital spending projects. The Level 1 budget projection, and I'm going to show you some details on the next slide, shows a deficit of $39.9 million next year. Edna, next slide, please. I hope this isn't too small for yous to see. So this is our Level 1 projection in blue compared to the current year revised budget. Let's look at the revenue lines. Our state aid is, and this is confirmed in the governor's budget, is to increase by $77.9 million. Our estimated increase in foundation aid is $71.1 million. The other $6 million is the various expenditure-based aids and other aid we get from the state. So that is, as Mrs. Woods opened, that is great news. Sales tax, that's, we're expecting that to remain flat. Our Level 1 budget's always conservative, and our city of Buffalo revenues never changed very much. All other revenues, those include invoicing to other districts for services we provide to them, refunds of prior year expenditures. We're always scrubbing our data and submitting revisions, and it includes Medicaid and interfund transfers. That's $22 million. So our initial look at our Level 1 revenues, 2324 revenues, is $1,633 million. And that includes a $71 million increase in foundation aid. That's only half the story. Now let's take a look at our expenditures. Our salaries and overtime line, we're expecting that to go up by $11.9 million. This includes the settlement of three recent contracts, BCSA, Local 409, PETA. So, and it includes step longevity for everybody else at our current staff levels. The Level 1 budget includes no new budgeted staff, the same staffing levels as we have now. Our contingency, it's going to go up $40 million to $59 million. This includes $50.9 million contingency for a potential BTF settlement. So while we are getting $71 million more in foundation aid, our cost of projected increased by approximately $51 million when we settled the BTF contract. Our contracts, pretty flat, they're expected to go up $4 million. These are the budget departments' estimates at this time. Obviously, the departments and the school-based budgets will add, will make their own request. Facility rentals, that could go up by $1 million. There's escalation costs in our current leases, plus potential additional space on Chippewa. Charter tuitions, that could go up as much as $11 million, and that's simply based upon our projected enrollments and changes in tuition rates. Transfers and debt service, that's, that's expected to go up $9 million. Payments, our principal interest payments on our current debt are actually decreasing, but for our Level 1 budget, we threw in additional money as transfers to capital to fund unadable capital projects. So if you take the changes in revenues of $77 million increase, and you deduct the $83 million increase in expenditures, our projected deficit will increase by $5 million. So fantastic news on the revenue side. We're going to have to redouble our efforts to cut costs, defer costs, and enhance our revenues through our revenue maximization program. But we can do all this. This is our first blush and possibly worst-case projection that we start the year with. Okay, so... Edna, next slide, please. I appreciate your patience in letting me get through all this. The next topic is an RPSR update. The initial budget plan was submitted and approved in the fall of 2021. I apologize for that typo. The current revised budgets are at $289 million three-year allocation, and that's the result of community and board input and internal BPS planning. These revised RPSR budget are aligned to the five strategic goals of the district. It may not contain every item requested, but it provides a sound foundation for planning out the remaining 18 months of this funding source. We're halfway through our PESR. A detailed report was distributed one day afternoon. We met with Mrs. Woods, and I think we had a good meeting, as usual, to review it and possible revisions going forward to those reports. I asked that you please contact me with any requests for further information. It's a lot of data. It's presented in our standard budget templates that you're familiar with. However, the data's not all in MUNIS and searchable, so if you have any questions, give me a line for more of the reports, and I'll pull you any additional info you need. So before getting into the detailed reports, I'd just like to quickly recap data previously presented at Finance Committee meetings. Edna, next slide. I had trouble getting that last sentence out. So the revised three-year plan. 2021, that's our actual closed-out first year of our PESR. $59.8 million in expenditures and encumbrances. The current year's budget is $158.4 million, and the last year, which is next year, is budgeted right now at $71.4. That all totals $289.6 million. A couple of things to note here. 2122 has been closed out, audited, and finalized. Any unspent dollars were carried forward into the current year or repurposed. If you go down to Note 4, I want to end there. The S.R. 2 grant, that top one in the table, that ends this fiscal year, in September. It has to be closed out by October of 2023. The whole process of closing out and getting it audited, that'll take up to 60 days to complete. So I have some important dates regarding the ending of that grant, which I'll touch on in some of the next slides, but that's important to note. That grant is over this year. We will absolutely fully spend it, but it's to note that grant will end this year. Edna, next slide, please. A quick look at what's in the current year revised RPSR budget. The first column, $158 million or $158.4 million. We've spent 26.5 of it, and we have $30 million encumbered. So we have about $101 million available in that grant. I outlined this at prior meetings, but the largest budget items and expenditures in the current year, building improvements in plant, this involves, this, this includes HVAC equipment, renovations at School 86 and School 4, playgrounds, and some emergency requisitions and expenditures that we incurred earlier. IT equipment and network services, $27 million. Expenditures related to the rebuilding after the cyber attack, iPad and laptop refreshes, time clocks, whiteboard refresh. So a lot of important infrastructure there. After-school programming, $11.7 million. Summer school, $9 million. Security equipment, the metal detectors and radios, $5.3 million. 50 security guards are in the current year's budget. And there's a lot of other FTEs, teachers, BCSA, guidance, trades, PETA. And lastly, the RFPQ or Community Organization, the current revised budget is $1.1 million. However, Mrs. Woods, as we discussed, we will fund all those requests as they come in, and we expect that budget line to grow in the second half of the year. Edna, next slide, please. I'll just touch on those reports to describe them, and please, I ask you to reach out to me, ask me, and I brought Danielle Swannacamp here, who was instrumental in keeping the RPSR budgets on track through all the revisions, and she's done a fantastic job. But those reports I distributed, the first report is a, is a breakout of the three-year budgets by use of funds categories. These use of funds categories, they're going to be used in all the other reports you see. Reports 2 through 4, they expand upon Report 1, but they include the budgeted FTEs. And I'm referring to this six or seven-page report I handed out earlier this week. All the, all reports 2 through 4, those are based on the same dollar amounts. Each report is broken down by a use of funds category, and then they're sorted differently using various account codes. You'll find that you like one sort better than another to analyze and to ask your questions. Report 5 provides a detailed listing of the FTEs that are included in our PESR. And again, we can provide any additional information upon request. Edna, next slide. So our PESR, as I mentioned before, the S.R. 2 is, clothing is ending at the end of this year, so there's some important dates. On February 15th, that's our goal, the budget department will submit those current revised budgets that you've seen now in our detailed report to the state for approval. We all have to remember, while we're making revisions and planning, within what we understand to be the state guidelines, the state does have to give its final sign-off to any revisions. In March of 2023, as part of the 2324 budget process, the grants department will meet with all departments to review the current revised RPSR budgets for both the current year and for 2324. That's a great exercise, especially this year, as the one grant's coming to an end, and we move into the final year of the last RPSR grant. It's really important that all the departments take the time to understand what's in there and what's not. On April 1st, the budget department's going to have to start chasing down people to get their requisitions and POs. They have to be completed for the, the S.R. 2 grant, which is ending by April 1st. On October 30th of this year, S.R. 2 has to be closed out. This part of our PESR is over. Only the S.R. 3 grant will remain open in 2324. Last important date, in the fall of 2023, the state will begin audits of the RPSR budgets and spending. That includes everything from, did we follow purchasing procedures? Did we get quotes? Is your accounting correct? And most importantly, does it fit all the guidelines as outlined by the RPSR on grant? Edna, next slide. So some final comments on our PESR. This has been a topic of discussion, and field improvement projects are not allowed under our PESR, nor are they building adable. That is why we are using general funds to fund those projects. A portion of the remaining RPSR funds could be used in a BTF contract settlement. We made that statement at the last RPSR update, just think it's important to keep that in mind. Further revisions to the budgets may occur. However, at this time, we're submitting balanced budgets to New York State by February 15th. Any additional items have to be offset by cuts. The same time we make additions, we have to make the same amount of cuts from another portion of the budget. Keep in mind, any other revisions still have to be submitted to New York State for approval. A last comment, and this goes again to my point about this next budget is going to be one of the trickiest or more complex budget we've had in years because of the importance of using every dollar through various fund sources and how they all interrelate. It's going to be a lot of planning involved. But we need to begin discussing the phase-out of our PESR next year. However, it is premature to move our PESR-funded positions to the general fund until the BTF contract is settled. And keep in mind, alternative funding sources, either through the general fund, maybe a Title I grant or something else, are identified for summer school, after-school, and other programs that are currently in our PESR. So we can't just move anything from our PESR right now into the general fund. You saw our, our Level 1 Maintenance of Effort projection of a $40 million deficit. We just need to plan this out, because there's more than just FTEs in our PESR. There are from some very core programs totaling tens of billions of dollars that are in there that we have to find other funding for. Okay. Again, I really thank you for your patience as I rip through this information. The last item for tonight is extra activity. The last item for tonight is extra activity. Focus tonight is to present to you a solution, but I think it's important for all of us to understand some background information. The current paper-based system is not equipped to handle either the volume or the quick turnaround expectations of extra activity payroll. So I just want to go through some background before we talk about the solution. The district policy for paying extra activity, this might surprise some people. There's, the first bullet just said, there's very well-communicated timeframes for what extra activity is supposed to be submitted to the Budget Department, who has to review those for accuracy and to protect us against double submissions prior to it going to payroll. So those dates are widely known, and they have to be adhered to because payroll is actually processed on Tuesdays of the week the check is run. So it's all under a very tight timeframe. Then there are special circumstances and timeframes that are clearly communicated. These things, word by word, are sent out by budgeting payroll for any extracurricular activity communication. And the district policy is that payroll can take up to two pay periods to process extra activity. There's nothing in any labor contract or our procedures that says it has to be paid that we could submit it. It's over and above the payroll's main priority of getting the salaries and hourly paid. None of this is meant to be defensive in any way, shape, or form. I just thought I'd refresh you on the district policy. One more bit of background. And when I was talking to the superintendent about this, you know, this was, she made a good point, she goes, start tracking just how many miscues there are every week. So, Edna, next slide, please. Sorry, got ahead of myself a little. So we went back, pulled some data. We currently process 6,800 checks per pay period, approximately 5,500 are salaried and We currently process, on average, 79 supplemental checks to correct mistakes or omissions on the Monday following every payroll. This is really important. Approximately 64 of these are extra activity-related and 15 are salary-related. Now normally, let's say, two years ago, we wouldn't be processing the extra activity as supplemental checks. They would be included in the next payroll per district policy. Extra activity payments have exploded the past two years. They increased by 9.6 million dollars or 112%. They more than doubled from '21 to '22. And in the first six months of this year, they've increased an additional $2 million or 17%. The majority of this increase, 85%, is extra activity as paid to BTF members through grant-funded programs, including summer school and after-school programs. So that's some, I think, important information on just how many supplemental checks are run compared to what's pro, the 6,800 checks that are processed every week, and also just the explosion over the past two years of this, and still utilizing a paper-based system. One other note I put on there, the sort of, the increased awareness of the supplemental checks, it really began with a new program that was implemented in 2022 to pay best members, aides in assistance, $5 extra an hour when they watch classrooms. This was a new program. It involved grants, which was general fund, there were all kinds of legal and accounting considerations. It caused numerous delays during its implementation. And I can specifically track back this heightened awareness of issues to when this program was implemented. We got it implemented, it run smoothly now. None of the people paid under that are part of those supplemental. But I do remember that. That was one event for a new program that really caused this heightened awareness. So I hope I didn't come off as defensive, and we just wanted to give some background facts. Now here's, here's our potential solutions. Okay. Solution number one, it's a SharePoint-based system. It's specifically designed by payroll, IT, and a vendor to process extra activity. It includes employee data and fund numbers tied directly to MUNIS. It has very easy-to-follow approval queues. It checks on double submissions, which is a real problem, and rejects those. It is searchable in 10 different ways, by department heads, by payroll, by almost anybody. And most importantly, once these sheets go through the SharePoint process, the approval files can then be imported directly into the MUNIS payroll system. Those paper sheets are currently hand data processed. That'll save a large amount of data input and hours of labor. I'm talking a huge amount of labor. This application was tested and ready to roll out one week before the cyber attack. Cyber attack wiped it out. We're working with IT now and the SharePoint vendor to reestablish this application by April 1st. An awful lot of files have been found by IT and the SharePoint vendor. We're very confident, and we're discussing a rollout date of April 1st. I'll have more updates as we dig more into it. But this has to get done before the summer of 2023, which, because of summer school, is the height of overtime season. That's a very tested, very effective system to overcome the current problems with extra activity. It's just a matter of resurrecting those files, getting it reinstalled, and training. But all the testing on it has been done. There's a second solution that we'll be working on in the background. We have not given up on MUNIS entire executive time. As I've discovered, a large amount of reengineering, onsite analysis, and training will be required. There's no time for this completion. We're really focused on the SharePoint-based systems by April 1st. I'm just about out of breath. I'm done. We'd be happy to take any questions. Thank you for your time.
Board members, each of you were sent the ARPSER multi-page documents. I hope you had an opportunity to take a look at them. As our CFO has pointed out, there is a lot of very important items that we currently fund in the ARPSER monies, and we only have one year left of that. So some very important things and decisions are going to have to be made about what gets moved into the general fund and what we can continue to fund. So I urge you to take a look at this report because we've been asking, what's in the ARPSER? What's in the ARPSER? And the very first report is very easy to read. Our former CFO always gave us a nice pie chart, and our current CFO did the same thing, showing the basic categories of COVID training and our facilities, that we all know we had to upgrade and put air cleaning modules in, we had to upgrade our facilities. A large area was the information technology. We know we now have a school system that has to be able to be remote and in-person. That's our new functioning, and a lot of money was spent on that. The biggest category was expanding our initiatives so our children, our students could regain what they lost, so we can give them, give new initiatives and expand education. Then there's student support, transportation, and benefits, and then indirect costs. That first chart is real easy to read, pretty clear, and as our CFO said, he can print and drill down and tell you anything you want to ask about, oh, is my school in there? What about this or what about that? We have to thank Danielle for organizing this so that we can get information, not just data, on ARPSER and where the spending is. The other thing I advise you to take a look at is the last page on this report, which gives you the significant staff that are funded currently in the ARPSER. And talk with your schools and your principals and see what's in there because it's highlighted that there are priorities. Guidance counselors, there's 18 of them in there. Social workers, school social workers for addressing the trauma, there's 24 of them in there. The security, top priority, there's 50 security officers. This is ARPSER grant money ending in one year. And then there is 87 other different staff people and 43 administrative staff people. So this is important. Take a look. Know what's in ARPSER, and you've been given the information, the school-based budget instructions have gone out. So each of your school-based budget teams will be meeting with your principals, trying to figure out what their priorities are and how they're going to implement that five-by-25 directive from the superintendent. So is there any questions that, just want to start with that? If there's any, any questions on the ARPSER? Kathy, Dr. Kathy Evans-Brown, I see your hand is up.
Thank you, Madam Chair Woods, and thank you, Mr. Barnes. What an explosive, comprehensive presentation. So I have a couple, I just have a couple of questions. So when we look at the money, right? So if, if, I mean, not saying that we're going to send any of this money back, but if we don't spend it. Okay, so let me stay there, because all of these are related. And you talked about the 21, 22 budget dollars and encumbrances that's been carried over for '21, '22 because that's closed. '21, '22 is closed, I get that. So in this '22, '23 column, are those, they're in there, right?
Right, yes.
Okay. And then, lastly, with the RFPQ community organizations, there's 1.1 million dollar earmarked. So do we know how much so far have we used?
989 million dollars, or $1,000. But there's more on the way with additional requests from schools, and we're going through the process. But we've already encumbered or spent almost a million. So we'll be, we'll be reallocating more money to that line.
All right, thank you. Oh, and the one last thing. When you talk about the cyber attack, the potential solutions, when you talk about that application was lost right before the cyber attack, now does that cost anything or we're, or not?
I'm sure the vendor will be submitting an invoice for services to resurrect it. I can't imagine it being much. All the programming work has been completed.
All right, thank you. Okay, the next hand I see is a large member, Terrence Hurt.
Mr. Barnes, first of all, I'd like to thank you for this tremendous presentation and the body of work that you've put together, you and the staff put together to assimilate all these numbers and give this district and board direction about where we're at right now and what's the possibilities for our future. My first question is that I was going to influence that the ARP funds and S R funds have to remain in that category and couldn't be infused with the general budget. I mean, how does that work? And my concern is that, that monies that not being spent have to be refunded back to the federal sources. So I just want to make sure that that money is accounted for and spent for this time period.
Yep. Yeah, it's a good question. Actually, what we did was the reverse. We had $7 million for projects that were in the capital, that were in the ARP budget. One of those was Ojai Stadium. We found out from the ARPSER guidelines that we can't use that money. So I got to take it out of ARPSER, right? And then I use 7 million in the general fund, and I transfer that throughout each our capital fund. So the Ojai Stadium project was funded from the general fund, and it freed up money in the ARPSER budget.
Okay, I understand. Just to make sure that, when it's all over, that the money's, I'm sure that you're on top of it, that it'd be accounted for correctly and that we don't get penalized in any sort of way.
Right.
And also, I do love the, love the adaptations that we made for the summer school programming and after-school program. And with security, I know that those three things our community members have been most voiceful about is the security of the students and are opening back up our after-school programs, the summer programs. So thank you for the superintendent for making sure those things weren't got put in place and that, and that we're able to, you know, help our community and help our families. That's all I have. Thank you, and thank you for the presentation, Superintendent and Mr. Barnes.
The next hand I saw was our new board member, Cindy McEckton, and then followed by our new board member, Terri Shuda. Ask your questions, please.
Thank you so much. I echo everyone else. Thank you for a thorough and fast-paced presentation. Very much appreciated all of it and the rate by which you shared all of that. So high fives for getting it all out. And it's really a point of clarity, and actually, I think this would be more maybe to fellow board members, but one of the things that we, or I heard at the tail end are the FTEs that are affected by this change. And I just wanted to make sure, it appeared as though we are charged with meeting with principals to talk about what their needs are. And as a point of clarity, I just, I'm wondering, is that something that we are actually tasked with doing or our fearless leader here, Dr. Williams, and her team is kind of looking at, in meeting with principals to ensure that appropriate needs are met within the schools? So if somebody could offer a point of clarity there.
So we do have a team that meets for our building-based, you know, staffing for the following year. We have a district team that meets with each building principal and talks about, you know, what their needs are, what the state's regulations are, what they have to have, what's mandated, and all of those items. So we do do that, and then we report out to the board, kind of, you know, what it is, schools are sharing that they need and how close we can come to giving them everything we need. And I believe for the past couple of years at least, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Barnes, but we've been able to pretty much give schools everything that they've asked for as long as we're able to find the staff to fill the positions.
Absolutely, correction, superintendent.
Thank you.
You're welcome. That answers your question, board member?
I think so. It sounds like, I just wanted, again, so point of clarity, because I, I take it and receive information as it's action items of which that I have to follow up on. And so I, you know, want to make sure just for clarity purposes that we know that as the board, we're going to be charged with hearing. that we know that as the board, we're going to be charged with hearing a report that comes through. But we should be aware of the positions that are at risk. However, it is not necessarily our duty to go in and individually meet with the principals to discuss necessarily, you know, their needs and that the district is doing that and reporting back to us solutions, so.
Well, I just want to say to you that the superintendent prepares the budget. And they do a darn good job. The superintendent does a darn good job. And that is their responsibility. But the old saying says, the executive branch proposes, and we are the legislative branch, the voice of the people, we dispose. And we have to listen to our constituents and feed to the superintendent things that may be very important like the proposed budget says there is only 400 students at this school and the principal, since we are with them and, you know, the concerns of principals says, well, I just got 90 new students back from, from the charter schools and my count is higher. So I actually, I think we have a principal who's up here next, he can tell you about it, that actually we do have some, we need a higher count or some significant things may have happened. And there may be new visions and things that the principals in the schools have discussed with the superintendent. And the superintendent may have said to them, well, you know, okay, being, you know, this is what we can afford. Our, our previous situation was that principals didn't ask for the things they needed to get the job done because they were given things like status quo budget. And there were some critical things they needed. And our job as the board members is to be aware of that. And what the board has done in previous years is put an equity budget on there because all children in all schools deserve to have the resources, the staff they need to address the priorities, to create the vision and to give the children that education. And we work with our superintendent. And it's been, it's been a really good pleasure working this year with our new superintendent because she has funded a significant portion of counselors, guidance counselors. And that's what you saw in the ARP Esser budget. Initially, there was 173 additional positions added to address the needs of our schools. And I thank you for that, Madam Superintendent. And that's why I wanted to point out to everyone that those additional positions, which was supposed to address learning loss, we haven't addressed the learning loss, it's still here. And hopefully, there will be additional monies to address that. But there are some decisions that will have to be made. And we have to be aware of that and advise our superintendent and work with her and create a budget that everyone can live with. Our next hand, I hope that further clarifies that situation of Warrior. Terry Shuda, our newest board member, you have a question?
I want to thank everyone. I know that as a principal and as a school district, it was, it's probably one of the most difficult things to make sure that a budget fits the needs of not only the schools, but the district and keeping the vision of our school district going. I do have a couple of questions, Jim, and I appreciate all your efforts in preparing your presentation tonight and your staff. My question is, tell me a little bit about the supplemental check. Who asks for supplemental checks? Are those?
It, it's payroll terminology. It simply means if we've made a mistake or missed the salary and employee's paycheck, if they call payroll right away, we'll cut them a check on Monday. If we're notified that an extra activity for a specific department, it may have actually missed their deadlines, but somebody's really clamoring to get it done, we'll do an extra check run on Monday. Supplemental really means extra, an additional check.
So the 64 supplemental checks you gave may not be the true number of how many people that had a problem with their check?
No, that, that, that's the number.
That's the number, that's the only, that's 64 people called? Or is that, were there other people that may not have called about their check? Do you know what I'm saying?
It's 64, and it's actually 79, I think, I'm looking for the page. It's, sorry. It's 79 people who called, made aware of it. Instead of calling another department, they called, you know, they should call the department first. Did you submit? And then they call payroll.
Okay, all right. So I can, the people that have talked to me, I can instruct them to call payroll for a supplemental by Monday morning?
It should go to their department or principal first. Oftentimes, there are extracurricular, extracurricular activity sheets sitting there at a department or a school that were not submitted. They should always check there first. If they say, I submitted it, and payroll will process a check.
Okay, perfect. Thank you so much for that clarification.
The next, is, is that the only question you had, Board Member Shuda?
Thank you very much.
The next hand I see is Board Member Jennifer Baccosi.
Thank you, Chairwoman Woods. I, it's almost as if Board Member Shuda was running around in my brain because I was thinking that same thing, knowing there were issues with checks before and wanting to know kind of what that meant. But I do want to say I appreciate the presentation because, you know, for those of us who aren't very budget savvy as far as like each line, it was very, it was where I could truly understand what was going on. I can depict what it is and I could question if anything. But your presentation really is very thorough and I really, you know, I'm, I'm pretty sure I can get a hold of everything I need to. And to Board Member McEckin, so you know, I, I wasn't sure myself coming into this how to go about finding everything out other than what the district gives because I'm, I'm always about getting both sides. So just an example, I conduct kind of a listening tour every year, whether it was virtual, and, and this year we'll go back to being in person where I work with the superintendent and the ASLs to schedule a block like a week where I meet with all my schools. And then they have the opportunity to give me, you know, any information they need to give in case they need, you know, advocacy on any level, talk to students. So you kind of take that block to go and visit all your schools instead of having to figure it out throughout the year. And it's been very helpful. So I don't know if that's the same kind of way you want to go about it, but it's not like I'm going in there like, give me everything you need and what's going on. It's literally the opportunity to be able to have them reach out to us because it is our job to represent them, right? And, and, and the folks in the building. But it's done, you know, in lockstep with the district. I don't just go out and do that. I, you know, it's, it's, it's very much a cohesive collaborative thing. So I just wanted to put that out there for you, that there are opportunities for you to be able to do this. And in a way with, I know you have such a busy schedule where you'd be able to maybe squeeze that in there.
Yeah, I've already been out to the majority of the schools. So it wasn't a question of going to the schools or getting to know the principals. It was whether or not we're involved, I guess, in the budget process. I was just trying to understand that point and get clarity. But I do appreciate, you know, appreciate that. And I do agree, we should have, you know, relationships and understand our schools and those that are in our schools across the district, really. So thank you.
Okay, Board Members, I just want to comment on one other thing in this excellent presentation as you have received from our Chief Financial Officer. When he tells you and he's saying that we are expecting and the budget was planned and it says we have a 34.6 million dollar deficit, that's in layman's terms, just means, hey, the money that's coming in is less than the money we're spending out. And we need to take 34 million out of the surplus fund balance that we've been building up and nurturing and doing good things like cutting costs and containing costs and increasing revenues. We're going to have to use that 34 points, or is planned to use 34.6 million to balance our budget. The other thing is, as he pointed out, that figure was cut down to only 16.1 million. But that's still, we have expenditures greater, what we're spending is greater than the money coming in. And we are using our fund balance to balance the budget because the budget must be balanced. Revenues must match expenditures. So is there any other board member who has a question before I turn it over to our?
I have my hand up. I have a question.
Okay, I'm sorry, Sharon, I didn't see you. Board, Board President Chapman, please proceed.
Okay, I just want to be clear to everyone who's listening that it is, has not been an unusual practice for this district to use its fund balance. So I don't want to paint a picture that this is something abnormal. Okay, that's the reason for the fund balance. Is that not right, Mr. Barnes? I don't want it to be on the news tonight that Buffalo Public Schools is overspending and they're using their fund balance, et cetera. Could you please address that? Because I want to be clear with that one.
Yeah, thank you very much. And I know that Superintendent and I addressed this earlier in the Whistler Report. Using our conservative budgeting and not knowing the actual spending trends, we pass a budget that has a $34.6 million deficit of, of which we would fund from the contingency, the reserves. However, as we do detailed monitoring of expenditures and projections, we, we typically, not typically, always find underspending in certain lines. That reduces our projected deficit. So now from a 34.6 million, we're down to a 16.1 million projected deficit. Depending what happens on the current spending trends, that could be break even or maybe a small surplus at the end of the year. And that's what's happened in each of the last five years.
Thank you.
But we begin the year with bottom-up budgeting and conservative numbers to like plan for the worst.
Right, I appreciate that, but I want the message to go out that we are fiscally responsible in our, in what we're doing. Because for some, for every reason, that's not always the message that goes out about the positivity thing. So I really wanted to make sure that that was clear, especially to our new members.
That's a good point.
I want to thank you so much. I'm very pleased with some of the things you've put in place. I guess I'm one of those people that are, like my plate always full, but, and not half empty. But I do want to ask a couple of questions about how do we tie equity into this equation at this moment before we move forward with sending out our, to our schools, the various budget packages that we're sending? In your presentation, you talked about that non-vacant positions or whatever, that there would be a six-month time period. And I was wondering why six months was used and not three months? Since we're talking about school, the schedule with school.
That's a good point. Six months, truly, it's our first time doing it. We thought the half-year point, you know, you get out of the summer and then you have September, October, November to really see. So it's sort of four months into the year to see if your staff gets full. But secondly, it's a, it's a large undertaking if it's not controlled. You're going to have principals and others just submitting literally hundreds, if not a thousand, requests back and forth, back and forth. So we really wanted to get a, get a fix on, and not going to have this position fall. And then have a plan for how they want to use that money. So we just.
Spoken just like a true budget man, Jim. Spoken just like a true budget man. You want half the money, okay, for the year. I'm talking from a, I'm talking from a different perspective here. In that when you're talking, yeah, when you're talking a nine-month cycle to go six months without staff, that's a big bite. And I really would appreciate if you take a look at that. Terry, you agree with that? I know you do. So if you take a look at that, because it just seems to me that the onus should be on human resource to fill those positions before school even starts. And I understand the budget, I mean, the contract, I understand how the contract, trust me, I know all about it, the limitations that we have. But what I'm trying to get you to understand is, is that out of a year, out of a, 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 a school year, to wait six months, and you said it's really only four months, but wait, but in essence, if you start September, October, November, December, and wait to fill a position, that's halfway through the year, as far as I'm concerned.
Okay. Yeah, I truly wasn't, I wasn't trying to make you, well, I just, it's halfway through the year. But they get to, they, they get to use the full years on spent money.
Well, yeah, now you're playing catch-up. So now you're trying to, now you're chasing the A-ball.
All right, I hear you though.
Okay, let me explain, let me explain. I'm just glad to see that we're moving in that direction. But be, let's be real honest. If we have not filled a position, okay, within 60 days of the vacancy, we need to have a Plan B, okay? Because what we've already seen is that we've already overtaxed our substitute population because of this. And we have many children that have classrooms that do not even have a teacher that's really fluent in that teaching area, in that subject area. So I really want you guys to take another look at that because I don't think that we're meeting the needs of children waiting six months to do so. The other thing that I'm, I'm looking at is, under the equity lens, is that when, and Dr. Williams, this is probably more of a question for you. When do we use the actual schools' data? The information that we're sending to the state to assess what these buildings actually need? Okay, I understand how this budget process works, okay? And I'm, and I hopefully, I'm glad, hopefully we'll be using actual numbers, not bed days' numbers and whatever. But when do we really take a look at what state this building is in? Based on the information that we've sent to the state to determine, what is, where is our benchmark as a district? Do we allow 30%, 50% of the kids in a building not to be reading at a Level 1? You know what I'm saying? When we start digging into this, when is it possible that we can come up with a, or you can come up with a bare minimum standard of what each one of our schools will look like? And when they don't have, we meet that minimum standard, okay? Then that's when we start looking at our equity overlays. Because until we do that, okay, we're, we're not analyzing what we have. We just assume that all things are equal. We may be in a situation where we have a school that has 30% special ed children, which automatically changes the entire culture of that building, not that, that meaning that they need additional resources, when you may have another building that has 15% special ed needs. So would you just please maybe contemplate in your mind's eye about that conversation about what would it look like if we, across the board, what every school building would have minimally inside of there? And then from there, maybe we could start looking at the equity needs of the children. Because when I go on the state's website and I start bringing up the school buildings, there are startling differences in, in, in what's going on. So that's just my equity room. And I, and you know, I don't get off my equity broom. But what I, what I heard was a term that we haven't heard in a long time, revenue maximizing, maximization program. How about cleaning out my office? That's what I've been doing, trying to get rid of 11 years' worth of paperwork. How about I ran across this the other day? And so we haven't talked about that in a very long time. And I'd like to hear more about it because in my mind's eye, I also thought about a conversation that I had with a, 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 a chair from the special ed department that said that we're not billing for everything that we can bill for under the Medicare reimbursement. Okay, so I'm being told that we can bill for more things than what we're billing for and we're not billing for it. not billing for it. And I'll be happy to share that with you, but I think you need to, it was set up years ago at the board, because I do believe when the counselors inside the buildings do certain things, we're allowed to be billed for and things like that. And we're not maximizing that. So when we start looking at income or ways to generate some revenue, certainly, we need to make sure that that process is locked down tight moving forward. And then my last thing, and I'll get off the, my, is that we do some very great things in this district. We can offer some great services. However, I would like to see us start figuring out ways to generate income. We need to look, take a look at our overtime, because we need to really take a look at the overtime report, okay? Because there are some departments that I really think we really need to monitor if we're going to start moving forward and trying to be efficient. And it's been my experience that there are some people who traditionally, continuously, habitually, do a lot of work in overtime, and I'm not sure that many of that work cannot be done during the daytime. So we've got to start cutting costs, I certainly don't want to cut in the classroom, I want to start cutting costs before we get to the classroom, and I really would appreciate it, a look, maybe through finance and ops, through the overtime report, how does that impact us moving forward? We did that years ago, again, cleaning out my office, ran across some of that, see it don't pay for me to clean out my office because I run across all those old reports. But anyway, I want to thank you for at least moving forward with the equity lens and figuring out additional ways that we can generate money for this district. And I think there are a lot of things we could do, I really do. Thank you, great, great, great meeting.
Well, thank you, I just a quick follow-up, we have a rather robust revenue maximization program. At some point in the future, the Superintendent and I will present that, but it's rather robust.
Great, I want to hear about it, thank you.
Well, it's six thirteen, and Madam Superintendent, I'll give you the final word to close out the finance and ops session so that we can go into the executive affairs session.
Thank you so much, Madam Chairwoman, I mean, so much good information, you would never know that our acting CFO has been in his position, you know, for what is it, less than seven months?
Seven months, yeah, seven months.
I mean, you know, I met with him today, we meet almost every day, and he shared some things that I shared, I would share, that our state aid audits were all filed on time, our external and internal budgets were all filed on time, and our budget submissions were filed on time. And, you know, he doesn't even have a number two, he's just, he's here on the weekends, he's working in the evenings, and I think you have just done a tremendous job. It's not an easy job, and I think, you know, with a lot of the guidance from our chairwoman, Paulette Woods is right on top of, you know, every line that, you know, is in the budget that he talks about, and I just, you know, I just want to say that we do appreciate the work that you do, we see the hard work, and we appreciate all that you do. And just a note about recruitment, you know, I think recruitment is really upon all of us, you know, we've got a small team in HR that does, you know, do what they do, but, you know, I'm recruiting everywhere I go, and, you know, I think our chief can tell you that people are emailing me, inboxing me, because they want to become a part of our team. So I think it's going to, you know, take all of us to help with that effort, because we do want to get, you know, President Katman, the children, every person, every material, every program that they need. Equity is big, it's big for me. So, you know, as we're looking forward for next year, that's certainly going to be something that's driving how we are looking at staffing our buildings, we have to, that's the only way that, you know, we'll continue to grow. So, so that's going to be big for me. Anything you want to share, Mr. Barnes?
Yeah, well, thank you for your remarks, and thank you for your support.
Hey, all right. Good meeting.
With that, we close out the finance and operations. Chair, welcome, Mr. Scott, and I didn't know if you had anything you wanted to put in or any questions, you just got here.
Thank you, Chairwoman Woods. Just real quick, when I popped on, I heard something I think about school-based budgeting, and I would just say, and I continue to reiterate, as a parent, I find school-based management teams to be very informative, and also a place where parents really have a decision-making say, and where you learn the nuts and bolts of the school-based budget-making process. So I encourage all parents and other stakeholders to be involved in those school-based budget meetings and just school-based management team meetings that are held on a monthly basis.
Thank you, Board Member Scott, and with that, Dr. Kathy Evans-Brown, Vice President, I give the floor to you.
Thank you, Board Member, I mean Board Member, Chair Woods. So welcome to the Executive Affairs Work Session. Today, we will be talking about special education. Dr. Andrew Vera will, she's an at-large Board Member, she will chair this endeavor. So last year, or a year before at least, I remember the statistics that were provided around special education. So there's roughly twenty percent of the district's children who are receiving some form of special education services each day. And I believe that number could include charter school students. Historically, black and brown children, particularly males, were placed in special education, so that was really the bulk of who were receiving the services in special ed, for various reasons, behavioral, cognitive deficiencies, and so on. I am not sure that what their frameworks look like now, but we shall see during this process. I am hoping that the work will show facts, not assumptions, and I'm hoping that some, we could see some of these kids transition from special ed to general education. We don't hear those numbers. Because the fact remains that special education should not be a life sentence or death sentence, right? Now, I will pass the microphone to Superintendent Dr. Williams, who will introduce the session. Dr. Williams?
Thank you, thank you so much, Chairwoman Dr. Kathy Evans-Brown. You know, I had the pleasure yesterday morning to have breakfast with Dr. Rivera, and we talked a lot about special education, and what I've learned is that she's kind of a resident expert on, you know, some facets of it. She's got a lot of passion to make sure that, you know, that equity lens extends to, when we say all of our students, that we really are including all of our students. And she's got a lot of, you know, professional and lived experiences with, you know, some great things that have happened and some challenging things that have happened. And so what she proposed, and what she's proposing, is that, you know, we really, if we talk about our students who have been classified with disabilities, you know, really being part of our mission, which is what we say, we talk about all children, you know, then it's probably time for us, because we haven't, I don't believe, in a very long time, really sat down and dug deep into state and district regulations and policies and, you know, even at the federal level, and really taken a look at what our children today need post-COVID, you know, you know, with everything that's happening in society, are they really getting what they need? Are our teachers really equipped to, you know, in a very expert and sensitive way, you know, work with our students? You know, we even talked a little bit about higher ed, you know, and, you know, is higher education really, you know, preparing teachers for this level of work in K-12 education today, as opposed to, you know, twenty years ago? So we had a very intense, robust, and, and great conversation, and I'm very excited and encouraged by the proposal that, you know, we talked about. So with that being said, I'll turn things over to Dr. Rivera.
Thank you so much for your kind words, Dr. Williams, I really appreciate it, and I appreciated our very robust conversation, as well as your willingness to listen and to really think through these issues with me. So as I mentioned at the last business meeting, part of the goal of this is to create two committees that would work to review and support special education in the Buffalo Public Schools. And these are utilizing our own board regulations, as well as a process put into place to allow the district, the impetus in the space, to really take a look at what's happening with special education, what are our strengths, what are our weaknesses, and what might be our opportunities as we move forward. So for this presentation, what I'd like to do is take you through what the conceptual framework of this would be, what the charges would be. You also have copies of the charges and the documents that I created for both committees in your email, and I believe also in board docs. And after I get through how this might be structured and what the goals would be, then I'd like to have a discussion with my fellow board members about what feedback you have so we can think this through, as well as what our next steps might be. So if you could advance the slide, I'd appreciate it. So the purpose of the review is to move special education services to the next level, and support services for our neediest children and families, in support of Goal Number One and Two in the strategic plan. Next slide, please. As you can see, of course, as everybody on this board is really familiar, and a lot of the listening audience is familiar, one of the big pillars is services for our neediest children and families, because when we give students appropriate supports that they need in the classroom, as well as wraparound supports outside of the classroom, they can and they will succeed. And we've seen examples of this throughout our district, and what we want to do is magnify that effect. Next slide, please. I'd also like to draw the attention that the purpose of this kind of review is to support equity for all in that we do, mainly the supports for Goal Number One, which is to eliminate opportunity achievement gaps and equitable and excellent student outcomes for all, as well as Goal Number Two, access to educational excellence, accelerated learning and enhanced operations and facilities, maximumization. While the last two pieces there might not look immediately applicable to special education, it can, because one of the things that we need to think about when we're working with special education is accessibility. What are the barriers to access? Not only to reach programmings, but also to support our students who may have sensory challenges, physical challenges, and other challenges that would need some physical modification of their classrooms. Next slide, please. So what I'd like to do first is take you through the board regulations for the subcommittees so you know where these are coming from and why they're going to be, why we're proposing that they get put together the way they are. So if you could advance the next slide, please, we'll start with the first regulation. Go ahead and advance the next slide for me when you can, thank you. The Buffalo Board of Education bylaws allow for the creation of temporary ad hoc subcommittees to be performed, to be formed, to perform time-specific work for specific purposes. There are two types of committee that can be formed at the request of the Buffalo Board of Education, temporary subcommittees and ad hoc district committees. And I want to take you through how those things get formed and what that regulation says, because it'll help to understand why we're looking at this specific structure. And it's also my proposal to my colleagues on the board, that when we want to work with special assignments, this might be a structure that we could replicate in other areas. Can you advance to the next slide, please? So let's start with the temporary subcommittee of the Buffalo Board of Education. Next slide, please. Policy 2110, which is related to education law, as you see here, allows for temporary subcommittees to be performed at the request of the board. And those temporary committees will consist of less than a quorum of the full membership for special purposes. They'll be discharged upon completion of their assignment. So these committees can be put together for just specific, specific assignments that are time-limited. So it's not a matter of changing our bylaws, it's simply to create a committee with a specific charge that has a specific assignment to move forward. The president of the board will be an ex-officio member. You advance to the next slide, please. Ad hoc district committees are slightly different, as I'm going to show you here. Please advance to the next slide. Policy 4230 allows for ad hoc committees to be appointed to study or recommend courses of action in response to department, building, or district needs. These committees may be appointed by the board, the superintendent, or other administrators, with the knowledge of the superintendent, and in accordance with the range of responsibilities of the appointing body or administrator, to whom the committee will report. It too will have a very specific charge. So on the one hand, you have the committee that's going to be formed by the board, a temporary committee. On the other hand, there's going to be an ad hoc committee formed through the district, and they're going to work together. I'm going to show you how, as a part of this proposal. Please advance to the next slide. So the charge for these committees would be as follows. Next slide. Here it is in two columns, there's quite a bit of text on this, so I'm going to walk you through it, but the idea is, is that these two things have purposes that intersect with each other. So in both cases, they're looking at the policies, the procedures, and the processes, and the data around, with, for students with disabilities in some specific areas, the identification of students with disabilities, the assessment of students with disabilities, which is an integral part of triennial reviews and the IEP process, the placement of students with disabilities, areas of student conduct and behavior, as well as transition, transition out into the adult world, or higher education, depending on the student. The idea here is that the district ad hoc review committee will analyze the data, and then use that analysis to identify the strengths, weaknesses, and opportunities that exist under the current systems, and recommend changes as action items. It will regularly report the results to the Buffalo Board of Education Review Committee for Special Education, which would function as an oversight for that district ad hoc review committee. So district members would be working with this information, working with this data, knowing what they know, and then reporting out regularly on progress, but also changes that might, they see might be needed. The Buffalo Board of Education Review Committee for Special Education will oversee that work and receive regular reports in those areas that I already listed. The committee will report, will produce regular updates to be shared with the board at each business meeting, and will work with the chairs of Student Achievement and Educational Support to present during work sessions as the review continues. When the work is completed, the committee will recommend implementation of those recommended changes to the superintendent of schools, and work through our normal processes with the superintendent to modify the strategic plan and the superintendent goals as appropriate, if they are appropriate. Next slide, please. This is basically a visual representation of how this would work. So the board would establish both committees, and they would work in tandem with each other. So the membership of the Buffalo Board of Education Review Committee for Special Education would be established, the committee would receive reports from the ad hoc district committee for special education, they would eventually receive a full report, and would report out to the full board once a month at a business meeting, and select the student achievement and educational support work sessions, and then in consultation with the superintendent, oversee recommended changes. The ad hoc district review committee will do, as I said before, collect data and policies and procedures and processes, analyze them, report out at least once a month on progress and initial findings, and working with the chairs of Student Achievement and Educational Support to present during work sessions when appropriate, and creating reports. The key here is really to think about what can we do in our special education programs to fulfill the spirit. education programs to fulfill the spirit of supports for our neediest students and families, as well as the spirit of goals one and two in the strategic plan in terms of equity in education. One of the things that happens in special education is that we have a large variety of needs. And looking at those large variety of needs, what they are, and maybe where we can not only expand and support areas that need improvement, but also where we may have opportunities to do things better, to be a part of the leading edge in how we educate our students with disabilities, these reports and this review would be the groundwork we can lay in order to do that kind of next level, next stage support for our students with disabilities. Next slide, and I believe that ends the presentation. Thank you. If you could bring back everybody, just close down the slideshow, so we can have a discussion. The membership of these committees would be determined slightly differently. So the Buffalo Board of Education Review Committee for Special Education would be determined by us as the board. I, obviously, I would like to be involved. But I've also proposed that the VP of Student Achievement and the Chair of Educational Support should be a part of that committee, because it intersects so closely with the work that they're doing. But of course, as a board, we can discuss this and decide how we want to do it. I also would like to see one of the officers of CPAC be a part of our temporary, of our review committee, so we can ensure that we have that parent voice, and we can have that strong connection with parents who are experiencing the system as we go along. It wouldn't be the only way in which we'd be consulting student and parent voice. My recommendation would be that when the ad hoc district committee is working and analyzing data, a big piece of it would be surveying and doing focus groups with parents and families and caregivers and students with disabilities themselves. The ad hoc review committee would consist primarily of district members appointed at the discretion of the superintendent. So with that, I'd like to, I'd like to close my piece of presenting and open it up for any discussion, questions for me. And of course, I will defer to Dr. Evans Brown as the chair of this committee.
To Rivera.
Thank you.
Great presentation. I don't see any hands so far. Should I just, should I just go around alphabetically, or, okay, there's one. Board member Terrence Hurd, you're up.
Chairwoman Evans Brown, if you care to go epithetically around the table, if that's your wish.
No, no, no. It's okay. You were, you were the daring person to go first, so have at it. So I do see another hand, but go ahead, Mr. Hurd.
Okay. I'd like to thank Dr. Rivera for her work and her diligence in working with children and families and in our district with children with special needs. I believe that this is an issue that affects each and every one of our families, no matter who you are, where you are, or what position you are in life. And I myself have been in touch with family members with special needs throughout my life. And I think that giving this type of care and this type of attention to these, these individuals with specific challenges is very, very, very important, and it's been long thought, thought after, you know, within this district, but there's other measures that we can do to help these families, to help the, the parents, the caregivers, the siblings, everybody's affected neighbors. And if anything that we can do to try to, to try to have an impact on the quality of life for these individuals, including, like I said, the, the whole, whole home concept, the household, I'm willing to, you know, do whatever necessary, wherever is possible, to uphold these, these values and, and these challenges to see to them. So thank you so much for your, your work, and thank you for, for really, really taking a stand, you know, for better education in life and livelihood for, for our, our families.
Thank you, Mr. Hurd. I appreciate that.
Okay, thank you, Chair, Board Member Hurd. Next, we have Board Member Palet Woods.
Yes, I, I do believe this is a very important area. Our special needs population is one of the most rapidly growing part of our budget. Staff increases in our, in our budget, it's been pointed out that our student population is decreasing, but our staffing is significantly increasing, and that is because of the special ed population and their needs. So I do believe this is a very important area, because we do need to recognize that students with, students with challenges can achieve greatly. I mean, I think about Stevie Wonder was blind, Roy Charles was blind. People can achieve so many things and just be significant. But the question I really wanted to ask is, in that ad hoc committee, will it be looking at a significant issue of race in that special ed allocation? It appears that African-American men and women are just pushed in, into that area. It's, we're the biggest part of that, and I think that's a problem area. And I'm hoping that if there's any study, that it will look at the disproportionality of the population of people in that, in that, in that population with disabilities.
Absolutely, absolutely. And you're right. This is a big thing that we need to look at, and we need to encounter, and we need to look for as well. That's part of why placement and assessment are two of the things that need to get looked at, because that's where the, part of where those things start to happen. So when students get identified, why they get identified, how they get identified, how they get assessed, and how they get placed, those are the three processes that if they are not working the way we need them to work, that's where you're going to start seeing some of that disproportionality.
Thank you. Yeah, that, those are good, good subject areas. And, you know, I do think that when we talk about education, educating and staff development, out of this analyzation, I'm hoping that this committee can come up with other staff development tools by our existing teachers. Because, as you know, special education is a specialty. You have special ed teachers who, they're experts in that area. But I contend that our teachers ought to have that skill set, because this is a new day. We have a number of students coming from all over the country besides the United States. And it's important, they may not be special ed, they just may not understand the culture, right? And they're thrown into that, that, that pool. Nevertheless, Board Member Terry Shooter, Shooter, you're up next.
Can I make one brief comment? And then, Ms. Shooter, I'm more than happy to, I'm looking forward to your comment. The one thing I would like to point out is that it is critical to think about where professional development needs to go next for students with disabilities, and that needs to be a part of this, because per the provisions of IDEA, the standard is a least restrictive environment. And most of our, there are a great many of our students with, not most, I should say, all of our students with disabilities are supposed to be in a least restrictive environment. And often that means an inclusion setting, which means that general education teachers are working with our students with disabilities, and need to be supported in their work, so they can give and provide the best support and the best instruction possible to all of their students. That was my comment. Please go ahead.
Yeah, I agree. Terry?
Dr. Rivera, I'm very excited about this upcoming work. And as my experience of a principal of nearly 20 years in schools, it had nearly a 30% special ed population. I've learned a lot through that journey. And I look forward to working together for the good of the cause for the kids of the city of Buffalo. So I look forward to the work.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that. And I appreciate your partnership in this.
Thank you, Terry. Next, we have Board Member Jennifer McCosley.
Thank you, Chairwoman Brown. So I'm not echoing, I'm just really putting out there that this is very needed to have the structure, right? We do have structures in place, we do have groups, we have committees, but this seems to kind of bring it all together. And as a parent who is dealing with, you know, the special education committee and whatnot for my own son, I really have only been able to look at this as a parent, because it's kind of hard to take all of the pieces and put them together, and be able to advocate or put the resources forward for the constituents, when I was struggling myself to see what positions, you know, who plays what, who to contact and what to do. I do really, obviously, want to be a huge part of this. But one of the things that I, I really want to push forward, and it's something that, it's a struggle for me, is that I really want to see, as is some fellow board members had said, you know, kind of a part where every teacher is taught that the basic necessities around what needs to be learned for any student, considering we have so many students that are dealing with multiple issues. But at the same time, the students themselves, when it comes to placement, and I'm speaking from absolute personal, very real experience, is that not every student belongs in the box that is where that placement is. You know, there is, if we can look at our students in a way that we look at this whole child model, but not consistently try and, I don't know if it's for the sake of time, or if it's procedure, that's the way we always did it, you see in different schools that sometimes there's a bottleneck in communication where the, the teacher might have a different, a, a different mindset with the student they're working with, as opposed to what is typically done in that particular situation. And then the parents kind of stuck in the middle, trying to figure out where all that goes. So I'm really hoping that this structure makes so much more clear to folks. I do, again, it's, it's a struggle for me as a board member, because we want to have consistency across the board of what we expect in our development for our staff, right, and what we expect communication to be. But at the same time, the autonomy for the parents to be able to really bring forth what the issues are with their students, and, and if they don't fall into a certain specific area, that we work with those parents to figure out how that looks. So between these committees, I feel like we can really break down some avenues where we can be a little more communicative as to how this system works. And I, I, I'm speaking personally, but I've also received quite a few text messages since you began this. And there's, there's definitely, you know, some interest in how this is going to move forward.
I, I think it's safe to say that while we are dedicated to the support of our students with disabilities, that there are places in which we need to make stronger connections, as you point out, about how all of this works together. I can, with my son, who's an individual with a disability, as everybody on the screen knows, maybe not everybody who's listening knows, who graduated from the Buffalo Public Schools. In the beginning, because of the way that inclusion works, one of the things that I had to do was bring a binder that was all about Alex, all about Alex and how to work with things. And the INPs do cover this, but, you know, I have to say that the teachers who worked with Alex really wanted to work with him. So, I mean, a lot of, a lot of this is about the will is there. It's a question of what barriers are happening that's getting in the way. And some of them, frankly, might be a case where we have to advocate further up, in terms of Albany, in terms of federal. I mean, some of that may have to happen. This might be a place where we need to reinvent what special education looks like, and what we are dedicated to provide to our students, and make some innovation, because as, as you pointed out, Ms. McCosley, you know, placements have very narrow definitions. But our students aren't narrow, and they're large, in terms of their personalities, in terms of their abilities, in terms of what their needs are. And so maybe what we can do is look at this and think of a new way to do this, a different way to do this. And we can really fulfill the promise that we're holding out in terms of what BPS can do. So I'm very excited about it myself.
Yeah, thank you. These are great conversations, because Jen, you're right. I think often, over the years, IEPs place children in boxes, and they don't change. I very rarely saw my son's box change over the, over the years. And it became frustrating, so I had to hire from outside to help, you know? So yeah, so I think this is a, this is a good conversation. All right. So next we have, and thank you, Dr. Rivera, for that response. Next, we have Board Member Palet Woods, again, followed by Terrence Hurd, again.
Okay, I, I raise my hand again, because I'm very interested in focusing on issues that the parents are bringing to me, and I, I, you know, questioning and pointing out some things. A number, a significant number of the young people who have IEPs are brilliant. They're bright. I'm getting, dealing with parents, the, the child goes umstead, and they say he's bright as all, get out. But after COVID, and children not being able to get out and socialize, the behavior is a nightmare, and we're seeing that as a problem. So I'm hoping that we, this ad hoc committee can focus on this area and challenge, that child is bright as all, get out, but helping his, to modify the behavior so that they respect authority, don't throw chairs, whatever. That this is what parents are dealing with, and they know the child has behavioral issues. That's a significant area. But then the parents are also saying, because we have very active parents like yourself, Dr. Rivera, and they're going and getting the outside help, and they're looking with the agencies, and then they're saying, duh, I got this agency, this social worker coming, and who coordinates? So those are the issues that parents are bringing to me. I, I got it going on at five schools, so I, I want to raise those issues that the parents are bringing me. Children are just so bright, it's a behavioral problem. And then also coordination of those benefits. Thank you.
You're welcome. So special education, again, is, it's a large spectrum, right? And there, there's a reason why we call it twice-exceptional education in a lot of cases, because students will have gifts in some places and needs in other places. And that's exactly what you're, you're, you're talking about here. And I think that that's a part of why we wanted to create this committee in such a way that all of these pieces can come in as a part of it, so we can get a real sense of what's happening, how is it happening, where are those barriers, and what can we do to address some of this?
Thank you. Good response. I'm going to go back. I know, I see Terrence's hand, but can I have people who have not responded yet, Terrence first, and then I'll come back? Okay. So President Sharon Koppman, followed by Board Member Scott, and then Board Member Terrence Hurd.
So thank you, Dr. Rivera, for proposing this and putting it together. Certainly is something that's been needed for a long time in our district. At the recent school board convention last year in Syracuse, there was a mother who was advocating for her special ed son to have the opportunity to get a diploma versus a certificate. And so there are people who are statewide, who are working this issue. And certainly, when I initially said that Buffalo is time for Buffalo to, to be recognized for the work that they're doing. to be recognized for the work that they're doing, to be listed in some of the journals and things, certainly this is the type of work we're talking about. And we have quite a few of those efforts going on. One of the things that I am curious to know, and I hope you're that you guys certainly start with looking at the reports that have been generated over the year, years from the state. For whatever reason, I think I've been on this board for 11 years. I've only seen one report. And I know that there have been more. And I'm curious to know, you know, what those reports are revealing. But it's, I'm reminded of a conversation I had with someone recently who, who because of the behaviors that these children are bringing to the schools, are starting to do work with children from, from birth to school and trying to groom children and to help the parents with, to, with these issues. Because a lot of these behaviors are conditioned into children. You know, if a child cannot follow a command within so many repetitions, okay, you're almost automatically setting them up for failure. Because a teacher does not have time to tell your child five times to do something. In our houses, when we were growing up, you know, you got one time and then your mother looked at you with a funny look and you realized that I didn't do something and you did it. Okay, that, that's not how it's done. They do the one time, the two times, the three times, the four times. By the five time, maybe the kid might decide to do it. So I personally think some of these children are just being not meaning, not intentionally, but are just being conditioned into not following directions and they end up in trouble as a result. And so I would venture to say the majority of our issues in our district with special ed children, our behavior issues, are not intellectual issues. So I'm looking forward to seeing this work. I have a couple of questions though. I, because ideally, we do have a CPAC committee. And you wanted to put at least, you know, someone from that committee. Would you also be receptive to having people who are not necessarily a part of the CPAC committee? There are a lot of people that don't necessarily align with people, but who can bring substance to your committee, that are parents who are dealing, who, you know, have, that are just not a part of, whatever, for whatever reason, they don't want to line up with a committee. Doesn't mean that they don't want to be a part of something. They just don't like lining up to pretty much going with a group of people who have a stigma attached to them, especially the CPAC committee. Because I think we're missing the opportunity to bring in people. And at whatever level we can, our parents. And I just would like to see, because oftentimes, our committees do not represent the majority of the parents in this district. They just represent a little piece. But I'd like for you to consider what, what it might look like with either your ad hoc or your, or your temporary subcommittee in moving forward. And how does this committee interact with CPAC? Are you going to be getting your ideas from things that they're working on? Or how do, how do we have, how do you envision this, these two committees working with our standing committee for special needs is what my question really is.
Well, so let's go back. There's, there was a lot that I'd like to respond to. Let's start with your question and then I'll move backwards from there. The very first piece is how these committees would work together. The ad hoc committee would be a district committee made of district members who are doing analysis and generating reports. You had mentioned state reports. I had a good conversation with Chief Botticelli today, who's already ready to make that a big part of this process, as well it should be. So that, that box is already checked. That's going to be a big piece of it. The thing about special education and students with identified disabilities, there's a lot of reporting regulations that go along with it. And those things are going to be a centerpiece of what the review is. The ad hoc district committee would be district members working with that for two reasons. One, they're close to the context and they have the experience in analyzing and interpreting the data. Two, they can work immediately with information without any kind of hip or fur concern. When you have outside folks being a part of that kind of analysis and they can generate the reports to protect the privacy of our individuals and their families. And so I think that's really critical, especially when we're talking about special education, to be clear about why that needs to happen. So there's that piece of it. The next, the next piece is the Board of Education Review Committee. The Board of Education Review Committee is made to oversee and receive reports from that ad hoc district committee. They will be reporting out and the Buffalo Board of Education will then get those reports and disseminate them publicly through work sessions as well as through business meetings. Where CPAC would come in is a member, since they're dedicated to special education, a member should sit on that committee and receive those reports. Does that mean that no one else can be a part of that committee? No. But what I do want to do is I want to be careful about not overly expanding the committee. It's not about the committee acting on every single thing that comes up to it. It's about communication. The Committee for the Buffalo Board of Education Review Committee is about receiving the communication in the reports, making sure that parents who are engaged in special education know what those reports are, know about what's happening with the review and where the district is going next. It is my assumption, but it will be the charge of the Buffalo Board of Education Review Committee to ensure that when these things are analyzed, that parent and student voice, that caregiver, because, you know, it's, it's about those who love and care for our students with disabilities. It's that caregiver voice that is central and it is that student voice. Because our students with disabilities can also speak for themselves about what they see, what they want, what's working and what's not working. And often that's not really a part of the process. In our district, it's rapidly becoming a part of the process because that's one of the initiatives in the IEP process. But we want, we want to amplify that voice. So those are, those are the ways in which that I see parents working with these committees. But also there's nothing stopping the Board of Education Review Committee from working with a parent group or multiple parent groups or other parent groups as a part of this larger work. What I don't want to see happen, and you said it yourself, parents don't always want to do committee work for very good reasons. And I feel very personally, as a parent of a student with special needs who did manage to do some committee work, but did feel very squeezed all the way through raising my, my young family at that point. Requiring folks who have a job and are caring for families to sit on a committee and that being the only way that their voice can be heard, that's really tough. And I want to make sure we don't do that. What I do want to make sure is that the Buffalo Board of Education Review has regular discussions, meetings and channels of communications with caregivers and parents and students with disabilities. And I think there's a variety of ways we can accomplish that. My go-to is always focus groups, bringing people together for specific purposes. But there's a variety of other things that we can do as well. We can, we can come out, the members of the committee can come out and sit in various meetings. They can take meetings with people. They can invite people to sit in meetings. It can be flexible. It should be inclusive. And in fact, it has to be inclusive because that's the spirit of this work. So those are, those, those are those two pieces. The last piece that I'd like to comment on is I want, I want us as a group to be careful. And this is my request for the group at large to consider, to be careful to separate out behavior concerns from identified students with disabilities. Now, it's hard to separate that out because sometimes they map onto each other. You know, one, one very strong strand in the theory of education of students with disabilities. And certainly I'm on board with this as a former preschool teacher, with what we were taught from the very beginning. If a student's foundation is not set, in other words, their basic needs, and this is Maslow's hierarchy of needs, right? If their basic needs are not met, and that can include for our folks with, with various kinds of disabilities, spatial considerations, discomfort, sensory issues, a variety of things, that can result in a variety of behaviors. I think where we need to think about as a district is the extent to which, how can we work with supporting behaviors in the classroom without necessarily recommending directly to special education? Because not every student has to be a classified student with a disability. In fact, even if you have a disability, you may not actually need to be a student with an IEP. You may just need general supports in the classroom. And it's my, my hope and my goal to make sure that a part of this review starts detangling all of those pieces as well. I hope that answers all your questions.
Oh, certainly. And I am sure, there's no doubt in any of our minds that these, these two committees are in capable hands with you leading the charge. Okay, you're going to finally get it fixed. I can believe that. You've paid your dues long enough.
I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Who did I say followed? Sharon? Okay, so, so Larry, Board Member Larry Scott and Board Member Cindy McAction had not spoken yet, and then followed by Mr. Hurd.
I'll be quick. Chairwoman Dr. Evans-Brown, I just want to say that this is, Dr. Rivera, this is very thoughtful, what you've put together, very intentional, very important. Just like central registration and transportation, special education is very nuanced. There's a lot of moving parts. I'm back in a traditional role of a school psychologist in my daily work and this is what I'm doing now. Evaluations for CSE, chairing CSE meetings, helping write IEPs. I also see how charter schools at times are not able to meet the needs of students with disabilities. And those students then come back to district or come to district and then they become our responsibility. And just the last, I think, point I want to make is that many people, many of my colleagues have made great points about special education and, and some of the challenges that we face. But just, I think be mindful, there's a range of disabilities. There's 13 classifications under IDEA. And there's a varying degree of severity in the, in disabilities. And so you can have students that will be successful in a regular classroom with an IEP and the least restrictive support. And then you're going to still have students that are going to need a higher level of support, maybe a smaller classroom with additional supports, adults, therapeutic approaches for them to be successful. So this is important work and I am also proud to be a part of it and proud that we are, are making this a priority. Because I think in Buffalo, as the second largest district in New York State, it's important that we certainly do all that we can to make sure that we are meeting the needs of our students with disabilities.
Thank you very much for those comments. I, I agree with all of them. And, and the thing about special education also, I'd like to point out, is students can move in and out of different states of need. You know, they could start in an inclusion setting and then need to be in a more restrictive setting. And they could start in a more restrictive setting and then they can come out. Or they can go through those stages at multiple places. We want to make sure that we have a system that's responsive to that.
Yes, thank you. Board Member Cindy?
Thank you. Echoing many of my colleagues, thank you, Dr. Rivera, for spearheading this. And I do agree that we are in great hands and particularly looking at and hearing some of the comments and then some of, of your feedback. The fact that you brought up Maslow's hierarchy just made my heart so happy. Thank you for that. Absolutely. You know, in my work at Peace Prints, pretty much everything we model off of is truly based on that. So thank you. Thank you for it. But, you know, I think particularly, I'm excited about the idea of new approaches, tools, innovative models, concepts, and any progress we can bring in. Because I think sometimes that lack of understanding and/or change drives inability to provide services. And no two children are the same disability or not. No two, two children are the same. They don't learn the same. They don't receive the same. And we have that difficult task of figuring out how to best provide that information so that every child can receive it. And, you know, at this point, I'm very interested in its effect that it may have on suspensions. Because 35% of our suspensions are young people with disabilities. And so I, or classified as special education. So really excited to see where these thoughts and conversations take us. And what kind of innovative models or new tools can be implemented to assist in that space. So thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it. And I agree with you. I'm looking forward to seeing how this affects suspensions.
And then Board Member Terrence Hurd.
Thank you, Chairwoman. I'm going to be quick. And I know that, Dr. Rivera, you mentioned behavior concerns and students with disabilities. But sometimes it's very hard to separate the two. And how can we address those, those issues also? And I know there are good times, teachers sitting in classrooms talking about children. And I, and I heard it as being an educator. They talk about children, trying to get children removed from the classrooms, but we know those children need to, to have a really a special look into to find out, you know, what's really going on with the children and within their families and, and the structure of life. We've got, we know that every situation is different and every child is different, every family is different, how to deal with those. But there's a couple of quick points I just want to, just want to make. I know I'm going to be very, very thinking to the time. I'm really concerned about the quality of life while in Buffalo Public Schools and after Buffalo Public Schools. And if we could somehow dig into that, because I, I would like to see maybe some programs, like CTE programs, you know, for these individuals once they leave the Buffalo Public School System. Because they still are children and they still are families. And I know we got great programs like Peoples and the Choir, you know, out there that, that help with children and families like this or, and, and young adults until they later years. But I would like to see the Buffalo Public Schools, you know, take a stance in, in hiring these individuals, you know, once they're be certified and trained to work with other individuals with disabilities. So they can help cope with some of the things that they went through. Also, I would like to work with the state to write legislation somehow to, to have a special budget for children with disabilities. So that, that could be another pot of money that can come in specifically designed to help those individuals. And lastly, I'm just going to let, I'm leaving it off here, but we can talk on the phone later on because I know we're really restricted from time. But I would really like to see, you know, some of those things looked into and see how we can try to initiate and activate some of those.
Thank you for that. A few things that I would like to see with this as well. We dovetail in a couple of different ways. We do have adaptive CTE programs, some of them in schools for individuals with disabilities. I think we could use many, many more. And transition is near and dear to my heart about how we work with students as they leave the Buffalo Public Schools. We have some great young programs, young adult learning transition programs. We really do. But, you know, I think that because of the way that the landscape is, there's really not enough services for folks with disabilities, especially as they transition out. And I think anything that we can do as a public school system to promote that, to advocate for that. I can tell you as a parent, I'd be thrilled to see that. And I just, I can't let this conversation go without a shout out to the self advocacy groups that are all around in Western New York. You know, we have the Art of Advocacy. We have other self advocacy groups, some of which my son's been a part of, that, you know, if we can make connections with them and expand them, as you're pointing out, I think that would be all to the good. I look forward to talking to you about it.
Thank you. And one last thing, I know that Sharon mentioned briefly about children taking commands and demands. Now, this also goes into adulthood, because I can go back into 2020 when a young man in Rochester was detained by police that was special needs. And they put a bag over his head. I don't want to go deeply into that, but it goes into adulthood also. And this really affected their lives. You know what we can do to try to make their lives better in the future. So thank you.
You're welcome.
And I'm sorry, one more thing.
Yes.
Dr. Brown.
Dr. Brown. One of our teachers, Tom Vitelli, he would like to have a conversation. About children that are on the spectrum. He works over at our Emerson Commons and he, I told him that I would be, you know, talking with you. And I will send you his contact information. But he has some great ideas. He's just a wealth of information. And I think, you know, he, he has spent his life doing this and I think he'd be an asset. And he really asked, asked me the other day when I was over there eating some of the good food. If I could, you know, consider that conversation. And I told him I would reach out to you and share it with you. So it just came back to mind, okay?
Okay. That'd be great.
Okay, thank you. This has been a robust discussion led by Dr. Rivera. I don't, I don't see any other hands. Everybody's mind clear? And I'm gonna give you the final words, followed by Dr. Williams to close out this session.
My final word here is just one of appreciation. I appreciate that this board and my colleagues on this board are so supportive of our students with disabilities. And working to improve support and outcomes. I appreciate all of you and I'm looking forward to working with you on this. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Don't hang up. We have an executive session.
Superintendent Williams is gonna close out the executive session.
Thank you, Madam. Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. And certainly thank you, Board Member Rivera, Dr. Rivera. I couldn't agree more. I think, you know, in addition to the board members being excited about this endeavor. I've been getting text messages from principals, from district folk who are also very interested in participating, you know, in this. And so, you know, as I understand it, you know, the first piece will of course be, you know, the analysis of the data and regulations and policies. And all of those things that we'll be looking at and, you know, putting together that team to do that. And then coming forward with some recommendations that will impact future strategic plans. You know, we've done kind of a generalized strategic plan and, and, you know, it will be time at some point to begin targeting. You know, how we're gonna support, if we're really talking about equity, the specific needs of different groups of students. So this, you know, parlay's right into that. So thank you very much. I think, you know, the plan is very thoughtful, very intentional, very focused and gives good direction. So thank you for that.
And this will close out executive affairs.
Dr. Evans-Brown, if everyone who is not a board member or certainly Dr. Williams will be staying on. If the rest of you could log off, please.
We need to, a motion to go into executive session?
Yep. May I have a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing negotiations with the Buffalo Teachers Federation?
And, and to receive legal advice?
And to receive legal advice.
So move Jennifer.
By Mr. Hurd.
And Jennifer.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are in executive session. So am you or anybody not a board member or superintendent and this room should be off. And Ms. Hattali McGee?